Great. Thank you, Bill. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining our online town hall meeting about the COVID-19 vaccine. Our focus this evening is to give our residents more information about the vaccine and the vaccination process and to answer your questions with information that is available to us at this time. It is important for everyone to understand that the state of Connecticut determines the vaccination process for all Connecticut residents. Connecticut is presently in Phase 1A, and vaccinations have started. It is expected that Phase 1A will last until January or early February. Although recommendations have been made for the makeup of Phase 1B and 1C, no final decisions for when these vaccinations will begin has been made. We will discuss these phases this evening, and we will update the public as soon as we receive more information. Several of our residents sent questions to me prior to this meeting. Most of these questions will be answered during the presentations this evening, and we will reply directly to you tomorrow. For those of you who have joined the meeting by Zoom, you can ask a question using the Q and A button at the bottom of your screen. If you are listening on Facebook and you want to ask a question, you will need to join the Zoom meeting, and you can find the Zoom link on the town website on the homepage. At this time, I'd like to introduce and thank our panelists for joining us this evening. We have with us tonight Trumbull's Health Director Lucy Bango, our Chief of Trumbull Emergency Medical Services Lee Goodman. We have Dr. Gregory Buller, Clinical Professor of Medicine, Chairman of the Department of Medicine at Yale New Haven Health Bridgeport Hospital, and Associate Chief Medical Officer. Dr. Rockman Farigno, Chairman for the Department of Emergency Medicine and Associate Chief Medical Officer at Bridgeport Hospital. So, thank you all for being here with us this evening. So, to begin our program, I'm going to ask Dr. Buller and Dr. Farigno to provide us with an overview of the vaccine, including what vaccines are available, how does the vaccine work, the benefits and risks, the side effects, who should get vaccinated, and anything else you'd like to add. So, I'll turn the program over to you. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Vicky, and welcome, everyone. And we're definitely, Rock and I are very honored to be able to present this information to you. So, I'm just going to share my screen, kind of a couple of different things. So, give me a sec here. Hopefully, I'm going to move quickly. So, the SARS-CoV-2 vaccine is a new type of vaccine using what's called mRNA technology, which has actually been around for over 10 years. And the company Moderna, that probably a lot of you have heard of, has been experimenting with in this type of technology for at least 10 years. The goal is to teach one's own cells to make a piece of vital protein that will then cause an immune response. And let me try to see if I can go to another slide here real quick for you all. Can you all see this? Rock, you see, but my, yeah. So, this is just a brief kind of drawing as to how this works. So, what happens is you get the injection in your arm, and that injection contains a little piece of what's called RNA, ribonucleic acid, which is kind of a companion to DNA. And the RNA codes for a part of what's called the spike protein. So, when you look at the coronavirus, all of us have seen kind of cartoons of the coronavirus, and it's got these kind of orange things all along the outside of the round sphere-like coronavirus. Those are the spike proteins, and those spike proteins are the areas that able enable the virus to penetrate the cells and cause the infection. So, this RNA here is a little piece of that spike protein, and it's surrounded by a so-called delivery vehicle. And this depends upon the vaccines. And there are two vaccines that are currently approved through emergency use authorization by the FDA, and these the Pfizer vaccine and the Moderna vaccine. And each one has a little bit of a different delivery vehicle. The Pfizer vaccine has a lipid, what's called a lipid nanoparticle, and the other one is what's called a pegylated type of lipid. But regardless, they both do the same thing. They adhere to the outside of your muscle cells where they do the injection. And then the RNA is taken up into the outer part of the cell called the cytoplasm. Now, this is very important because your own DNA is in the nucleus of the cell, not out in the cytoplasm. There's no interaction whatsoever with any of this injection and your own DNA. Well, so what this mRNA does is it utilizes the cell's own cytoplasmic production activities to make this little piece of the spike protein, and it's transported to the outer part of the muscle cell. And then it's recognized by your immune system as not you. So, the immune system then responds with making antibodies which fight infection. Actually, two different types of immune reactions. Again, one is antibodies, and the other is what we call memory T cells. And these are a particular type of cell that then kind of sits in the background and remembers that you're supposed to be immune to this. And hopefully, hopefully, I say, this will allow for immunity to last maybe years potentially. So, it's, this is basically how the whole thing works. So, let me just go to kind of the rest of the stuff here. So, as I said, the immune response produces antibodies that protect everyone who gets immunized from infection, you know, if exposed to COVID. And we talked about the hopefully long-lasting cellular immunity, but this is not exactly clear how long this is going to last. It could be lifelong. It could be a year. I don't think anyone thinks it's going to be less than a year. It's very important also to note that the antibody response that the vaccine causes, the immune response in your body, is significantly greater than that that actual infection by COVID causes. This is why we recommend that people who have had a COVID infection receive the vaccine, because almost certainly this is going to allow for a much longer-lasting immunity than you would have just by being exposed to the COVID virus itself. So, this is taken from the Pfizer presentation to the FDA and directly from what's published by the FDA here in the last about a week and a half or so. And I'll call your attention here, this is the incidence of COVID infection, clinical COVID infection proven by taking a nasal swab and PCR, so-called PCR. This blue line, or kind of looks blue, bluish-purple, I don't know, is individuals who received the Pfizer vaccine. The red line are people who receive placebo. This is the first dose. So, what you can see is the first, somewhere around nine days, these lines are identical. But then all at once, immunity kicks in, and there are virtually no patients who develop actual COVID infection who receive the vaccine after day approximately nine. And you can see just this steady, you know, what we see. Steadily, people receive the placebo, that more and more and more people, you know, develop COVID. So, this graphically shows that, you know, after, you know, almost three, four months, complete protection, virtual complete protection, even with one dose of the vaccine. And we'll get to why it's important, though, to have a second dose. So, the first dose is 88% protective. This rises to 95% after the second dose. The importance here is that it's firmly believed that receiving that second dose will significantly prolong your, the time that you were immune to this virus. So, don't think that, gee, I've received one dose, and that seems to be really, you know, really effective, and I don't need to get the second dose. That is absolutely not the case. Reassuring to certainly me, and hopefully any, everybody, is at least, this is, this is specific to the Pfizer vaccine, but it's very similar with the Moderna vaccine, which are the two vaccines currently available. Only one patient had what they called severe COVID. And this, and this was seven days after the second dose. And the only way they defined it as severe is the person desaturated or dropped their oxygen saturation in their body down to 93%, which is low, but doesn't require oxygen. And you might not even know that you dropped your oxygen level that much clinically. The person did not require hospitalization, didn't require medicines, did absolutely fine. So, for all intents and purposes, nobody developed severe COVID after receiving either the Moderna or the Pfizer vaccine. This was effective over all demographics, gender, ethnicity, race, and all comorbidities. And I mean people who had autoimmune diseases and diabetes and heart disease and high blood pressure, people who you'd want to be vaccinated, that's who they chose to vaccinate here. So, it's not like they took a whole bunch of healthy people and vaccinated them. They took people at significant risk for developing COVID. All of them had really inconsequential evidence or infection. Now, right here, I say there's not enough data to conclude that it completely prevents virus transmission. Actually, the Moderna study, which was just recently released and allowed us to look at some of that information released to the FDA, strongly suggests that once you receive the vaccine, if you were exposed to the virus subsequently, you're not going to be able to transmit it. In other words, the concern is, well, you've had a vaccine, you get exposed to the virus, it hangs in your body a little bit, you don't actually get COVID symptoms at all, but you could maybe still pass it on to other people. Does not look like that happens either. So, that's reassuring to certainly, you know, anyone who's a healthcare worker really should reassure us all. The majority of the side effects were local effects where you had the injection, which makes sense, right? So, remember I said that they inject it into your, you know, your arm, into the muscle there. It's the muscle cells that are, you know, the site of where the immune reaction is taking place. So, it stands to reason that if you have a significant immune response there, your arm's going to get a little sore, might get a little red and tender. When I got my vaccine, you know, maybe a couple hours after I got the vaccine, it was a little sore, but not enough to limit me in any way, shape, or form. And I was probably more aware because I was kind of looking for that kind of stuff.
I'll second that, Greg.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, and Rock is a much bigger baby than I am, so if he didn't have any symptoms, nobody's going to. So, pain at the side, it was moderate, and 15% with the first dose, 18% with the second dose, and almost no one had any significant severe pain at the side. Systemic side effects, you can, I'm just going to go over these very quickly. Again, these are with the Pfizer vaccine. They're virtually identical to the Moderna vaccine. Fatigue was the most common, and it occurred in, to a moderate extent, in 20% and 34% respectively in the first and second dose. About 5% were felt to have severe fatigue only after the second dose. Headache was, again, 13 and 23% first versus second dose. You can see very low incidence of severe headaches. Chills were seen almost exclusively with the second dose, and muscle aches and joint aches in 10 and 20% respectively. But severe, again, a very, very small number of individuals. Lymph node swelling occurred in less than a percent of people, but it definitely could happen. What's been in the popular press are cases of Bell's palsy. Now, there were four cases of Bell's palsy in the people who got the vaccine, none in the placebo group. But if you actually look at what the expected rate in this, for instance, especially in the state of Connecticut, of Bell's palsy in the tens of thousands of people who have been immunized, four cases is about what you'd expect in the general population. So, we don't really believe that this is an actual potential complication of receiving the vaccine. What are your alternatives? Of course, you could just not get the vaccine and just, and take your chances. There are five vaccines, including the two that have been released, Pfizer and Moderna, that are currently in or completing Phase 3 studies for release in the United States. There's a third vaccine that was released in the United Kingdom. It is fundamentally different than the Pfizer and Moderna vaccine, has a completely different delivery type. If people have questions about that later, I'm happy to answer, but really understand it's not been approved in the United States anyway. Worldwide, there are about 180 vaccines under development. So, for whatever reason you wanted to wait, there are plenty of other potential vaccines on the horizon, although, you know, me personally, because I believe that the potential complications of COVID far outweigh the potential complications of the vaccine, that I got a vaccine. And, you know, maybe with the next round, if we do need another vaccine, maybe one of the others might be a bit better, but at least I've been protected until I can receive one of the subsequent vaccines. You know, another option are antiviral agents, and kind of like getting Tammy flu if you get the flu. But understand, all the antiviral agents we're currently using for COVID have been pretty ineffective overall. So, let me just look at the risk groups. Those people are at the highest risk for developing COVID. How were they represented in the study? Now, you can see, you know, a reasonable number of individuals who describe themselves as black, Hispanic or Latino, Asian. You can see about 60% were Caucasian. The vast majority, risk factor-wise, was obesity, obviously some diabetics, chronic lung disease. It was, it was effective across all groups. Patients with AIDS were included, completely effective across that group. There were some individuals who, after they had received the vaccine, both in the placebo group and the vaccine group, who became pregnant. There were absolutely no untoward effects that were identified in those, you know, approximately 20 in each group individuals who became pregnant. So, what is at least my recommendation? So, I wrote this right before I, this slide, right before I got the vaccine. So, as soon as I was able to get it, I got it. Especially if you're in a risk group. Age over 60, overweight, diabetic, high blood pressure, heart disease, lung problems, and really everyone who's immunocompromised or immunosuppressed after consulting with your physician. Every one of those people absolutely positively should receive this vaccine. There is no doubt that the complications, potential complications of being infected with COVID far outweigh the potential complications of the vaccine. That's, again, at least my opinion. And that opinion is shared by the CDC, the NIH, and a whole host of physician groups. And I will stop sharing. So, Vicky, as the host, I'll let you figure out who's going to go next.
Okay, that was obviously a great presentation. We, I'm sure everyone that was listening got a lot of good information from that and presented so well. So, thank you very much. Rock, you want to follow up with anything at this point?
You know, just to reinforce, Greg gave such a beautiful presentation and really highlighted all the major portions, I think that, that one should know. The only thing that I can offer, you know, from our emergency preparedness perspective is that it's a bit of a lottery ticket as to how one responds to COVID. And I think it's so exciting to have a vaccine available and to truly be vaccinating people because the ailment has been devastating for so many people. And it does not, it doesn't care who you are. And sometimes you just luck out, and you're fine, and other times you don't. So, the vaccine, you know, I don't want to like particularly advocate right for it, but my goodness, this is really exciting. And it really emotionally, I think, gives us something to look forward to. So, Greg, thanks for describing it so beautifully.
Yeah, I just, I reemphasize, Rock sees this more than anybody, you know, the dichotomy of people who come in who are seemingly identical. People who come in and, you know, they have COVID, and they, they come to the emergency department and don't need to be admitted and go home and do fine. And then there are the people who look identical to them, who come in and go to the ICU and have to be on a mechanical ventilator. It's just incredibly arbitrary, isn't it, Rock?
It really is, Greg. Thanks for bringing it up.
Yeah, I think that's what's so scary, because you just don't know. So, we got a couple of questions. Perhaps we can answer these now, if they pertain to some of the things that you were talking about. Someone asked, shouldn't we wait for more time to make sure there are not any long-term issues with the vaccine?
Well, so, again, I'll just give you, my view on it is that we know the potential long-term effects of COVID infection, which in a significant number of patients is very significant. And there are people who develop brain disease and almost certainly will develop premature dementia and have, you know, brain inflammation and what we call encephalopathy. The biggest target area is, are the lungs. And we have all sorts of patients who really start off as relatively healthy individuals or very healthy individuals, who still now, you know, six months after having COVID, can't walk up a hill, who undoubtedly have significant lifelong lung, will have lifelong lung problems. Same with kidney failure. Whole host of individuals develop kidney failure related to COVID and end up requiring dialysis, hopefully just temporary, but not necessarily. So, you are taking your chances. You know, obviously, I'm very gung ho because, for the vaccine, because, you know, Rock and I see just, it's just devastation. The things that we see are just awful. And if you can prevent those things, you know, how long are you going to wait to see how things are going to go? Is it a year? Is it two years? Is it five years? I don't know. I, me personally, I'm not willing to take that chance because I think that the, the vaccines and the methodology, again, methodology's been around for 10 years, has been well enough studied that, that we feel very reassured that the long-term effects of the vaccine are almost certainly nonexistent.
Thanks. That's a great answer. And the second question is, what do you define as overweight? Is it a certain BMI?
Yeah, so, once your BMI gets up to about 30, and it, then the, the risk goes up almost logarithmically. So, the two main risk factors, number one, by far, is age. So, once you hit about 55, actually, it starts to go up, your, your chances of having severe COVID. And then it just kind of does this. And I'm sure you've all seen that, you know, the nursing facilities in Connecticut have just been devastated. It's just, just awful. But the next biggest risk factor is being overweight. And the higher your BMI, the more the risk. And it goes up kind of like age does, almost logarithmically. So, yeah. And then a couple, you know, you couple that with diabetes and maybe some lung problems related to weight. It's really a very bad combination.
Yeah, and speaking of the washout of COVID, and Greg, you and I have had conversations about this. You know, there's, we're looking at, how do we, or how are we going to be able to care for the patients in five, six years? How are we planning which groups that we need to put new doctors into? And, you know, pulmonology and nephrology are two of the places that I know are going to need extra people. Isn't that right, Greg?
Absolutely. No, no, it's right. I mean, we're going to need a lot more lung specialists going forward. There's no doubt. Right, Rock?
Okay, so, one more question just came in. So, it's just wanted to know, when do you think those who have underlying conditions will be able to get vaccinated? So, Lucy, you might want to answer this, or I don't know if, you know.
So, I mean, right now, we're in Phase 1A. That group is, you know, we're in the planning process, so we don't have a definitive date. Hopefully, by the end of January, that will begin. As we get more information, obviously, we'll share that. But again, we don't have a definite date.
Okay, so, now I'm going to turn the program over to Lucy, and she's going to talk about the vaccination timeline, the phases, and how we will communicate the information we receive from the state of Connecticut.
Okay, so, I'm going to share my screen. I'm going to try. Okay, can you see my slides up there?
Yep.
Okay, great. So, we've been getting at the health department, obviously, a lot of questions regarding.
Can you see it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you see it?
Yes.
Yeah, I can see it.
Okay. So, we've been getting a lot of questions at the health department regarding the logistics. So, when are we going to have the vaccine available to us? Where do we go to receive it? When will it be available? So, I just wanted to clarify some of this information. And as you may imagine, this information changes on a daily basis. So, we might have information about Phase 1B, and then the next day, something changes. So, we will try our best to keep everybody up to date as this information comes in. The, the governor works in conjunction with the State Department of Public Health and other state and federal agencies, and they meet weekly, and they meet with the CDC, and they're, you know, in constant consultation regarding the vaccination planning. Then that information is shared with local health departments. And then we, in turn, use that information to develop our local plan. So, our, our clinic sites, how many, how many staff we will need to have available to vaccinate, who will be part of that initial phase. To date, we have administered, in Connecticut, a total of 7,761 doses, which is actually probably more now, this was as of yesterday, I believe. These are all, all the doses administered were in Phase 1A. Phase 1A includes, including this was a total of nine nursing homes. 75 nursing homes are scheduled to begin administering the vaccine this week. We received the first shipment of vaccine last week, which was the Pfizer, and we are looking to receive the Moderna vaccine this week. It is anticipated we will have a total of 24,375 doses of Pfizer vaccine and 63,300 doses of Moderna in Connecticut. So, Phase 1A. This is made up of healthcare personnel, long-term care facility residents, and first responders at risk of exposure to COVID. So, within that category of first responders, it would also include police and fire who respond to any medical calls. So, again, some of the people in Group 1A, it includes doctors, nurses, custodial dietary, any support staff in patient care settings, school nurses, home health providers, dentists, laboratory staff, clinical, students in clinical rotations, and then anyone in, any death care workers entering healthcare settings. So, all of these individuals in Group 1A are scheduled to receive the vaccine by the end of January, hopefully, both doses. If we move forward to Phase 1B, we are, in that group is frontline essential workers, including teachers, school staff, childcare, anyone who is in the essential workforce. The Phase 1B was initially, initially included people over the age of 65, but that has since changed to people over 75. And those individuals in 1B are scheduled to receive both vaccines by the end of January. Phase 1C, which is expected to take place beginning late spring, is for people 65 and older, other essential workers, and high-risk medical conditions. And those individuals, again, scheduled to receive the vaccine by late spring, but this is obviously subject to change, both of these phases, including not only the time, but the individuals that are part of the vaccination administration. So, how, we've had questions, how do I get the vaccine? So, as of, again, as of right now, we are only in Phase 1A. So, a lot of elderly individuals, a lot of people that work in other settings have been asking how they will, you know, where can I get the vaccine? As of right now, the way it works is employers who are part of 1A are notified by the State Department of Public Health to enroll in something called the Vaccine Administration Management System, or VAMs. And basically, what this is, it's a web-based tool that CDC uses, and it organizes information and tracks vaccination, and it supports operations and data collection for COVID-19 vaccination requirements. So, each business or employer designates someone called an employer coordinator, and this person is responsible for completing a survey, which is then approved, and then they get access to VAMs. And this person is responsible for, um, completing a survey, which is then approved, and then they get access to VAMs. The employer coordinator is also responsible for maintaining a roster of all their personnel. Once the survey is completed by this employer coordinator. They receive an email from VAMs and they register their organization. So all of their staff and volunteers within that organization. Then the employee will receive an email and they will register with VAMs. And at that point, when they register and they get approval, they will be able to schedule their vaccine appointment. And the way it works for, um, the vaccine is, as long as you're enrolled in VAMs, you can receive that vaccine at any clinic throughout the state. So when will I get the vaccine? Um, again, the state were in phase one A, so we're only limited to that information regarding that specific group. Preliminary information regarding one B, um, and one C. It's anywhere from January to late spring. So depending on, you know, a variety of factors, how much more vaccine we receive. How quickly we are able to vaccinate the members of these groups. Will allow us to maybe, um, change the timelines and hopefully get people vaccinated more quickly. So if you're eligible to receive the vaccine, once again, you will be able to, you will get this information from your employer, and you will be able to schedule the appointment at one of the locations, uh, VAMs. And the best thing to do would be to stay in contact with your employer or your primary care physician. They may have more information as to when you will be uploaded into the VAM system or be able to access the VAM system. We have had a lot of calls and even some people stopping by the health department and, um. I mean, we understand there's a lot of concern, a lot of questions, but at this time, we just don't have a lot of the answers. We wish we had more. So from, um, the most up-to-date information, the best thing to do would be to visit the State Department of Public Health website. Or, um, which is ct.gov/coronavirus or the cdc.gov. You can also call COVID, see, um, text the word CT, or I'm sorry, COVID CT to eight 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 seven seven seven, and that will provide some general information. Also, two one one, um, there's general information that's available there. Once we receive more information, we will continue to do robo calls. Vicki will put that information out, and we will also post it on our town webpage. And I believe that is all I have. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to take those. Let me just.
Okay, we do have a few questions. I don't know if you can see them, Lucy, but, um. One question is, and I guess anybody can answer this, is why did they change the original one B to one C? And I would imagine that is the people who are, uh, over sixty-five have been moved out to one C. So anybody have any information as to why they did that? Is it they just don't have enough vaccines or at this point?
So the state, when they meet with the CDC, they're they're the ones that, um, they determine what phase is appropriate for the vaccine, and it is based on, um, the need, it's based on medical issues. And, um, it's really focusing on the groups that they feel need it the most. And that is why they changed it, because as as the physicians were saying before, it's really as you, in your age increases, you are more susceptible to the side effects and of COVID. So, you know, sixty-five versus seventy-five, you obviously, um, have an increased risk of some of the short-term and long-term side effects.
So, yeah, so I'll ask the 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 doctors if they can, as Dr. Fuller's on the phone busy as.
I'm at the ready, I'm at the ready, Vicki.
We got Dr. Frigno here. So does that concern you that they have switched, um, the people that are sixty-five? And before they, you know, turn seventy-five into that group C? Does that concern you?
You know, um, i- if you look at the data, I mean, just like, uh, Lucille was noting. You know, the the risk of bad outcome associated with COVID goes up with age. I I think the teams are trying to make the best decisions with the information that they have and the amount of vaccine that they have to provide the greatest outcome. And, um, you know, what what's important is just to develop a strategy and get it going. Because the overall timing of who gets it when is probably not going to be strikingly uh, a different outside of the the first wave, which is the direct people that are interacting with real COVID patients right now. I think if if we're able to develop a strategy, which I'll tell you, VAMs is doing a wonderful job already. You know, providing vaccine, uh, to date, if they can keep that going, develop a strategy and and get get everybody vaccinated, that'll be great. Uh, the difference between sixty-five and seventy-five is is material, so it's good to be looking to the seventy-five and older. You know, it's the, if you're seventy-four, I guess, you you know, you don't agree with that.
That's true. Okay, the next question is, why did they, uh, sorry, if you are retired in category one B, how do you register for a vaccine?
So again, um, these are still unknowns. How it will work, how will we, how will you get that information? We don't know if it will go through maybe your primary care. We just, it's just too early to say how that VAM system is going to notify you. And, you know, understandably, it's concerning and it's confusing because, you know, you don't have someone who you would but an employer coordinator to get that information from, because, you know, after you're retired. So we don't, we don't really know yet. But I'm assuming it would probably be a physician.
Yeah, I totally agree, Lucy. I think that's a great advice. I think, um, you know, I know that, uh, for instance, the Northeast Medical Group is getting ready to stand up clinics, again, kind of like Ural's, uh, vaccine clinic um, to do one A individuals, but hopefully hopefully we'll turn that over to, uh, as soon as possible to one B and then beyond, uh, the clinic, you know, that's going to be a vaccination clinic on Quarry Road. Um, will hopefully be up and running, um, as early as January. But again, it's not going to shift over from one A to one B or one C, you know, uh, until the timeline that Lucy outlined, you know, previously goes through. But these are going to be direct, these are going to be, you know, directed by physicians. Um, and so just check with your primary care physician, they will, um, have gotten all the signal, the, um, information. You know, from the, from the DPH that that's necessary to, you know, guide everyone and and receiving that. Or I guess, I mean, I don't want to speak for, um, for the town of Trumbull, but you could probably, you know, certainly, um, contact uh, Lucy's office. I'm I'm sure after, after this is all figured out, they will, of course, have all that information and can and can answer questions like that, I would think. But it's going to be a while until this all gets figured out.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of these questions are are asking basically the same thing, and we don't have a, um, a lot of this information. But I'll I'll just ask the questions for, that have been, that have been placed in the Q and A. So will there be a cutoff, um, after which one B will start?
I guess that means, I'm assuming if you didn't, if you were part of one B and you didn't receive it.
I guess there might be three, I I'm going to read the whole question, and there might be three of ten phase one A candidates, for example, who opt not to get vaccinated.
So the phase one A is broken down into further risk categories. But the way it works, if you fall into one A, you receive an invitation to, and you're eligible to enroll. In as far as one B, if if you are part of that group and, you know, you didn't receive your vaccination, say, in January, and now we're rolling into one C. They're not going to say, oh, you know, you can't get it, now you missed your your deadline. I'm not sure if that answers the question, but.
I think it does. Uh, if you were sixty-five but have a pre-existing condition, which level would you be in?
So again, um, that category is, I believe it's one B. Um, and that, you know, those individuals really need to stay in touch with their physician to determine, um, you know, how they're notified and, um, when they'll be vaccinated.
Okay, well, people in one C, and I think you already answered this, but who are not.
I'm sorry, yeah, that was actually one C, Vicki.
It's one C, yeah. Okay, so will people in one C who are not working need to use VAMs to register for vaccine when it's their turn?
So VAMs does have a, um, a user manual, and there's, um, a section for self-employed individuals, and they can upload that information themselves. We still, um, are unsure when it comes to one C, if VAMs will even be in use. It might be a different platform. But again, you know, this information, as we get more of it, we will certainly let everyone know how to enroll. So, um, you know, they don't miss their opportunity, and we make sure we get everybody vaccinated.
So actually, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I I I actually relatively impressed that there's so many vaccines outside of the immediate, you know, hospitals that are taking place, you know, like these, you know, these nursing home administrations that that are beginning. This is, you know, I I was kind of imagining this was going to be, uh, you know, a couple of months from this, but, you know, it's really impressive that this is rolling out in this speed. I mean, do you have an idea? I mean, we had the expectation of it was taking about eight to ten weeks to get through our employees. Any thought on, will it be sooner than that when we get to general population? Should everybody just expect to, you know, have to wait for a couple of months?
I mean, my personal opinion, I think that we, it will happen sooner than anticipated. I think we're getting a lot more vaccine, we're getting it a lot faster. I think especially the health departments, we've been planning for this since it all started. So we've been ready to go. We are, you know, we have max vaccination plans in place for other things like H one N one and flu. So, um, you know, that being said, I think you're going to see a lot of smaller agencies like ours who are just ready to step in and and take over where we need to. So, um, I I anticipate, you know, a lot of, um, agencies throughout the state being able to vaccinate a lot of people a lot quicker than they originally anticipated. And that's my hope.
Yeah, I'd agree. I mean, just to follow up with that, uh, Rock, I mean, at least the, what the state has offered is that, for instance, the scenario that was presented before, sixty-five-year-old who has a significant comorbid process that is thought to, that person's probably thought to not be able to start to get vaccinated until the end of January. But, um, but I agree with Lucy, I think, given the 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 outpouring of, um, you know, potential numbers of vaccines, particularly Moderna, they seem to be able to gear up to make huge amounts of vaccine. Uh, effectively, it may, that may be truncated by, you know, a few weeks.
Okay, next person's asking is, uh, people who have serious diseases and why they were are not in the one B phase.
So again, you know, it, these are all. Um, all of these instances are all evaluated by the CDC. And they make decisions on where they feel the vaccine is would serve the population the best and where it's needed the most. And for, you know, whatever reason, after all of these meetings with all of these different agencies and physicians. That's the determination that they made. And I hope the doctors have something a little bit more to add to that, but, um.
Not really. It it it's, it's, you know, you can only roll it out so fast, and I I think, uh, you know, the nuances of it are really tough. I think Rock termed it best, like, you know, seventy-five instead of sixty-five, they're just at higher risk and you know, have to start somewhere, and you're trying to take the people absolutely highest risk. But again, I, you know, COVID now has been around since, um, you know, February. We're talking about trying to get the vast majority of the population vaccinated over the next few months. So kind of if one steps back, it's just, you know, amazing how fast this will go on. It's just important, of course, for everyone to continue to, you know, wear masks, socially distance, wash your hands frequently. Avoid situations that might put you at significant risk for contracting COVID, like, you know, being for a prolonged time indoors without a mask, for instance. Things like that.
And I think also that those specific populations are, have been doing a very good job of limiting their exposure as best as they can. So, um, you know, that has to be, there has to be something to be said for that, too. Um, and maybe that's why they are pushing certain populations down the line, um, and trying to vaccinate more of, you know, the frontline workers who are really out there with the public every day and are exposed all of the time to get those individuals vaccinated first.
Yeah, we've seen an amazingly small number of individuals who are hospitalized, who have, um, you know, what we call immunosuppressed or immunocompromised related, um, illnesses. Uh, you know, in other words, people with cancer who are are taking chemotherapy, or people have autoimmune diseases who are taking, you know, medicines to suppress their immune systems. Um, and again, I think that just speaks exactly to what you were saying, Lucy, is that those individuals are very adept and and know, you know, at staying away from risky situations that might put put them in harm's way. Uh, they've been very effective. We we have seen precious few of those individuals. I mean, what what do you think, Rock?
No, I I really agree, and and to talk about risk, Greg, as you describe it, um, you know, Lee, you know, being our EMS chief. I mean, there is no tighter spot to be with a severely sick patient who may have COVID than in one of the ambulance rigs. I mean, Lee, what is what is your, uh, group feeling?
Uh, no, absolutely, I agree. I mean, I think that that's one of the things that I, you know, I wanted to touch on is is this community has really stepped up to work together. So we, um, I think we're very progressive right at the beginning of this, um, with our health department and our local hospitals, looking at what we could do to protect the community. Um, and then our community has been so responsive and kind of taking on board all that guidance, the socially distance to stay home, particularly those high-risk people with immunocompromised and comorbid factors that tried their best to stay home and and have the the least amount of exposure and risk of disease transmission. Um, and then, you know, certainly, again, you know, there were times when I would even joke to my family, I felt that being inside our ambulance or the or the ER, our local ER was probably the safest place to be from COVID at some point, because we were all taking so many steps and layers to make sure that if we were transporting someone who was shedding the virus, whether they were very symptomatic, um, like some of the very sick patients we've had, or some of our surprise candidates who we didn't realize or didn't suspect had it, that there would be no risk of us then transmitting that virus, um, or our, or even our own crews sharing the virus with anyone. We've taken a lot of steps. Just taking that responsibility to make sure we don't bring the virus into the many nursing homes and assisted livings that we have locally. So I think it all works well, and I think that will go together with this vaccine as we add this vaccine tool into our giant toolkit. And that's why I'm not too concerned about the delay from the one B to the one C. Because I really think that fundamentally, we're not going to stop doing our other social distancing, that hand washing, the wearing the masks right off the bat. Uh, you know, we know that the vaccine is extremely effective, but there will be a small percentage that uh, might not be fully protected. There will be a percentage of people who choose not to get vaccinated. Um, and so until we can truly understand, you know, the the more long-term effects of how long we have that immunity and and how it's affecting us. We're going to keep doing all of these other things, and so those people who might be waiting that extra month or two to get the vaccine, I don't think you're any higher risk. You're certainly more protected because those, that many more people around you will have the vaccine. But going forward, just still taking all those steps and ultimately the long-term goal of getting as many people vaccinated as we can will get there. But I think everyone will be safe whilst we take those steps.
Okay, uh, our next question is, what about veterans? Will vaccinations given by the Veterans Hospital be on the same schedule?
So there's nothing specific to veterans, but if they fall, you know, under whatever category. So there's nothing specific to veterans, but if they fall, you know, under whatever category they fall under depending on their age and their um, medical conditions, um, that's where, when they'll be vaccinated. Um, but I mean, if they do, you know, go to the VA, they might want to reach out to someone there. I'm sure that the VA hospital has someone that they designated to um, give, provide vac- vaccination information to veterans. So I would um, I'm, and I'm sure they're already in the process, obviously, but um, I would reach out to someone over at the VA.
Okay, how about 39 and 40-year-olds with underlying conditions? What phase would they be in?
So if they are under, um, i- if they have one of these, a, a medical condition and they're immunocompromised, they would be in the 1C as of right now.
Okay, um, are there enough vaccines currently allocated to Connecticut to cover all people in 1A, 1B, and 1C?
So all of the vaccine is not in Connecticut at once. It's allocated, um, it'll be allocated on a weekly basis as needed through um, hospitals and through physicians, um, local health departments. There, you know, we, we have to store a certain amount. We have limited storage. We have um, a certain timeframe that, that the vaccine um, can stay in refrigeration. So it, it's on a, a needed basis.
Okay, and the next question is, will we have a choice of Moderna versus Pfizer?
So right now, um, you, the way it works, if you are registered in VAMS under Phase 1A, you can go and get a vaccine anywhere throughout the state. So it depends on where you go to receive the vaccine. So some hospitals are authorized to store the Pfizer vaccine because of the type of cold storage, local health departments and other um, small clinics will have the Moderna because we don't have the capability to store the Pfizer. So it depends on where, where you go to receive it. And then as we get more vaccine and, you know, different types are available, then that, that will change.
Greg, do you, do you think there's any, or Lucy or anybody, do, do you think there's any reason to choose one over the other?
No, I got identical.
Yeah, they're very similar.
Yeah, you know, I will, uh, just uh, piggyback to it on Lu- to, to what Lucy said, which, you know, almost certainly, aside from the hospitals, uh, the Moderna vaccine will be almost the exclusive one used just because it's so much easier to store, it's just going to be, it's really almost impossible to, to move the Pfizer vaccine out of the hospital setting, at least right now. So um, you won't have a whole lot of choice um, until some others are approved. I, I, I will say the, you know, the next up, the AstraZeneca vaccine that's currently being used in the United Kingdom is um, again, a little bit fundamentally different than the um, Moderna and the Pfizer vaccines. Um, so just kind of, it's going to be important to pay attention to that once it comes out, um, when you're trying to, if you do then have a choice. Um, because it's, again, kind of fundamentally different. Um, it's delivery platforms, uh, different.
Okay, um, so this, this next question, I think we're going to answer, Lee is going to answer it in her presentation, but it says further on in late January, February, how do you trust a small pop-up place that says they have the vaccine?
Let me take that one.
Yeah, I mean, they, everybody has, right now, there's a huge process to even get the vaccine. You have to go through a lengthy approval um, process. So I, I would imagine, um, you have to have standing orders and all kinds of um, other things that, you know, I, I don't think people could just set up a pop-up and.
Snake oil.
Vaccine.
Snake oil.
Okay, I think that's, uh, as of right now, that's all the questions we had. So let me turn the program over to Chief Goodman. Uh, and then if we get some more questions, we can answer them after Chief uh, makes her presentation.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And I think um, part of my presentation has been made authentically through this last discussion, which is, is great. So um, just wanted to thank everybody. Um, it's really just, it means a lot to see how many people are so invested in, in coming together to, to become more aware, make an informed decision about this vaccine. I know with so many different um, social media things circling, it can be a little overwhelming. How do you filter what is the appropriate um, information? If you're someone like me and you don't sleep, I've spent endless nights researching just that, the difference between Moderna and Pfizer. Um, you know, what is that tiny little magic thing? Um, so I think it's important that you do that, that you make that informed decision. I definitely encourage everybody to talk to their local healthcare providers as well, um, because your physicians and your um, personal healthcare providers do understand your condition and how that might play into um, when and where you should get the vaccine. Um, but I, I just, I think the fact that you're all here talking with us and listening, just again, it just highlights what an amazing community we have and how um, we've all been working together for the last year navigating this um, never-ending evolving pandemic. Um, so the vaccine is really another tool that we have to add into our, our toolkit. And, uh, you know, I, I think we really covered it. The main thing that I want is that once you've taken the vaccine, that, that's just not a free pass to then stop um, using the social distancing and washing your hands frequently, wearing that mask, making sure your mask covers your mouth and your nose, um, and just doing everything that we can. Um, I, I know we all are looking forward to a time when we can once again share um, mask-free cups of coffee, hugs with our loved ones, you know, in-person celebrations. Um, and as much as I wish that getting vaccinated would immediately get us there, um, it isn't going to get us there straight away, but it is certainly going to help us get us back to that much anticipated lifestyle a lot quicker because our toolkit is much, it, it just keeps growing. So um, we've got to do that. Um, I, you know, I touched on it before, it's extremely effective, but there's one or two, you know, probably four or five percent that aren't going to be protected. So we've got to just make sure that um, COVID-19's transmission ra- rate is greatly reduced. And when it's no longer circulating widely, then we can look at introducing and reopening um, up all our social gatherings and things like that. Because we will get there. It is just going to take time and I, I think it's just important that we take those steps slow and steady. Um, my team will tell you, I say it all the time, slow and steady wins the race. Um, my husband is a race car driver. He disagrees. Um, but in this particular instance, it is true. You know, if we work together and we take these small step-by-step steps, we keep adding to our toolkit, um, we are going to get there. Um, I know we're not a hundred percent sure how long the protection of this vaccine will give us. Um, Dr. Buller said, you know, it looks like probably we're looking at at least a year. Everything that I'm seeing suggests that. Um, but again, we're only going to know as, as we keep um, paying attention and, and seeing how it's going. So we'll, we'll keep working with it. Um, it is a two-dose, so remember, even if you've had that first vaccine, you're going to have a second dose either 21 or 21, 28 days later. Uh, most likely if it's Moderna, in the general population's 20, 28 days. Um, and then one to two weeks after that before it's really, really fully effective. So you're still looking at that six-week period after you've been vaccinated, um, to really have that full protection. Um, so really, please continue to do all of the things that you're already doing, um, avoiding the crowds, washing your hands, follow the guidance on travel, fo- follow that quarantine guidance, self-isolate as much as you can. Um, I know it's tricky at the moment with all the, the winter viruses. Um, the other big thing, um, you know, it's unfortunate that this needs to be addressed, but you know, as, as always, somebody's going to be out there opportunistically looking to try to take advantage of the situation. Um, and that's where, you know, uh, we, I'm just sharing the screen right now where you can see, we want you to avoid COVID scams. So when you talk about those small pop-up clinics, um, really, there will never be a small, just a pop-up clinic. It's going to be a clinic that's put together by a hospital, by a medical practice, by your local health department. They might be working, you know, Trumbull EMS has worked a lot with our health department. We're available. We're ready to help them. We're ready to work with our local hospitals to try to get as many community members vaccinated as, as we can. But even for us, as state-certified mass immunizers and and having taken all the steps, we've still got to go through a lot of certifications and regulations before we can even assist our health department in delivering those vaccines. Um, so nobody should be able to just pop up a clinic and say, come down. Um, anybody who calls you and tells you that you need to save your spot, um, that they might ask you to pay money, um, out-of-pocket expenses to secure your vaccine or to get your vaccine shipped to you, that's not going to happen on any level. So whilst we don't know all the answers because the state, the Department of Public Health are working hard to come up with the plans for, for example, you know, our seniors who aren't working, um, there will be a plan and it will be, um, we'll give you that information, you know, our health department will, will deliver it to you when we have it. But it's not going to come from a phone call asking for your social security number and a $10 or $100 deposit to secure your spot. Um, anyone that says they can ship the vaccine directly to you and you could take it to your, your primary healthcare, none of those things are going to be appropriate. So there's a lot of resources out there. Um, we're going to put this up on uh, the Town of Trumbull website. It'll certainly be on uh, the Trumbull EMS website as well. I mean, it has some great um, links where you can call. So if you're not sure, if you have even a moment of doubt, um, rather call our health department or your local doctor and say, I was just told that I could come and get this vaccine. Is this a legitimate thing? Uh, we'd rather have you do that, um, than risk any kind of scam. So uh, please don't go to any pop-up clinics. Um, they really have to be affiliated with one of your um, established local hospitals, local health departments, um, or local uh, healthcare providers. I think that should cover that. That is, I think, you know, Lucy, myself, um, the Town of Trumbull, with Chris Lekman, Soro, all of our local hospitals have been working really hard. We're, we're trying to stay up to date. I know it can be frustrating at times when things do change. Um, but things change because we have either more resources available to us, so we're able to get stuff out sooner, or we are staying so in touch with the data and the research that's so important to keep you safe. Um, and that means we're going to have to change something because if it affects your safety, then we're just going to do it. Um, but we'll get the information out to you. So um, sometimes it's frustrating if you're not hearing from us. It's simply that we're also waiting and we want to make sure we give you accurate information, um, without sending you kind of waiting for one thing. We're very grateful for the sacrifices and the perseverance that you have shown this entire year, for your kindness, um, for staying at home, really from the bottom of my heart, from my entire team. You are our frontline stay-at-home heroes and we wouldn't be here without you. So looking forward to continue to work with all our professionals and with you. And in the meantime, I'm wishing you all nothing but health and happiness over the holiday season and to a brighter 2021. Give it back to you, Becky.
Thanks, that's uh, that's for sure, uh, Chief Goodman. Words of wisdom. Uh, I've got one more question on, on the queue here, and that is, what about college students?
So yeah, we did get a few questions regarding um, travel in college. So again, if you are, you know, that group wouldn't come until a later time. Um, but most likely the college would have information. Um, they would, if they're a college student that is employed, their employer would have information on where to be vaccinated. Um, once we are vaccinating that particular uh, group, uh, that age group, more information will be disseminated regarding that. The, as far as travel goes, I know we had some questions, oh, you know, if I'm traveling out of state, the way it's set up right now, you know, VAMS, I don't know anything specifically um, other than what we're doing in Connecticut. I don't know if, you know, if you travel to Florida, where would you be vaccinated in Florida? Um, or do you have to wait until you come back to Connecticut? So that might be a question for um, later in the planning process.
Okay, I've got one more question. Do you recommend using listed registered KN95 or European FFP2 masks, 94 to 95 percent, which can be purchased now from legitimate sources versus a typical cloth mask? Good question.
Thanks for leaving that one for me, Greg. Um, so.
You are the absolute expert here.
Yeah, you know, listen, uh, the KN95, it, what should be worn is what is comfortable and you feel protected with. Um, what has been shown to not be terribly effective is um, you know, like a gator-type mask like this, even though I've used them. So, so use a mask, either a classic blue-type surgical mask, KN95s. You know, the real important thing is what Lee mentioned, which is about distance. So it's about masking, it's about distance. Unless you get into the real specific PP that's been known to be effective, if you're trying to protect yourself from COVID, you need a pretty specific set of uh, personal protective equipment.
So I'll just leap in here since Rock looks like he's frozen, um, which is just to re-emphasize what you're comfortable with, because if you, if you're wearing something that doesn't fit right, is uncomfortable, you're going to be messing with it a lot. And if you're ever going to get exposed to COVID on the mask, it's going to be where you're messing with it. And then you start touching your face. And so absolute key to be wearing something that is um, effective. A multi-layered type of mask, like a surgical mask, is not quite, but nearly as effective as an N95 or any of the variations of that, uh, for anything but actually being exposed to COVID patients. So here in the hospital, those of us that see COVID patients, we, you know, obviously, and also Lee and all her staff, you know, they, you, we all wear very specific personal protective equipment that is incredibly effective, incredibly effective. You know, when you're out, uh, you know, going to the grocery store or wha- whatever, um, again, maintain social distance and, and, and wear a mask and wear a mask that, that you are comfortable with that is well-fitting. It's kind of probably the main thing. Now, Lee, do you have some, some other comments there?
I know, I think that that's absolutely right. I think the important thing that I tell people is to make sure that, um, whatever mask you choose to wear, whether it's, it's just this classic surgical mask or um, something else that it covers your nose and that you try to, you know, press it down. So it's, you know, as fitted and then it comes underneath your chin. Uh, I think the biggest mistake people make is kind of letting it drop down and not kind of fully covering that. Uh, most N95s that we use, whether it's a KN95, um, N95 anything, um, we actually have all of our staff specifically tested on those masks. Um, it's called fit testing and um, really, we have several brands here because one might fit one person, but it won't fit another person. And then when it doesn't fit appropriately, it's essentially a surgical mask. So whilst it is, it does give that level of protection, it doesn't protect you, for example, as, as EMS providers, paramedics, EMT, in the back of a small ambulance with a very symptomatic patient who is, you know, either receiving some sort of um, aerosolized treatment and/or they're, you know, coughing and, and kind of the virus is shedding very violently as it might seem. So in those situations, our providers are wearing masks that they have been fitted for in advance and checked regularly to make sure that fits. We wear eye protection. Uh, you might have noticed, we've actually all been wearing eye protection on all the calls. Um, and that's to do with when the, the community tr- transmission rate goes really high, um, that extra layer of eye protection gives us that extra layer to protect us. And then subsequently, we don't um, give it back to you. So I am not really a big fan of an N95 being anything more than a surgical mask unless you've had it tested, um, specifically fit-tested. Um, but if you are comfortable, the other thing is, um, just what you said, what I do notice is, is taking the mask on and off. Um, just trying to pay a little attention so that, you know, when you grab the mask all the time with your hand and you take it off like that and then you touch your face, you've kind of defeated that whole point. Um, so trying to take the mask off carefully. Um, I, I tell everybody, keep a little paper bag or a ziplock in your car, so you pop it down into, into that bag. Kind of just keeps it, everything just a little tighter. Um, but other than that, you know, certainly a cloth mask is fine, a surgical mask is fine. Like whatever makes you feel comfortable and what feels like it fits over your nose and your chin.
Okay, that's uh, great advice for everybody. Thank you for sharing that. Uh, so at this point, we don't have any more questions. So um, I'd like to say thank you to uh, all of our panelists this evening. Uh, Dr. Bowler, thank you so much for uh, joining us. Uh, your presentation was, was uh, so you know, full of great information and presented so well, and we really appreciate that. And you can, uh, I, I guess Dr. Frigno got frozen off the, the screen, so.
Yeah, he, he tried to rejoin unsuccessfully. So I told him that was on purpose, but I don't know if he believes me or not.
Well, we'll reach out to him to thank him again, but certainly, uh, you, you, both of you are so busy and we're so grateful uh, that you took the time to be with us this evening, certainly a few days before, before Christmas, so that uh, we, we do thank you for doing that. Uh, that you took the time to be with us this evening, certainly a few days before, before Christmas, so that, uh, we, we do thank you for doing that. So as, as we, we said earlier, um, as soon as we receive more information from the state, uh, about any, anything that we talked about this evening. Uh, whether the phases change, the vaccination information changes or is updated. We certainly will, um, send that information out to the public immediately. It'll be on our website, so I would ask people to continue to go to our website as often as possible. We have a lot of good information, uh, on that site. Um, also want to remind everybody about, uh, the free COVID nineteen drive through testing. Being offered at Griffin Hot, uh, by Griffin Hospital, excuse me, every Tuesday from nine thirty AM to three PM at Unity Park on Unity Road. Just to make sure you understand that this is not an affiliated program with the Trumbull Health Department. This is being run by Griffin Hospital. Uh, the testing site is open to Trumbull and non-Trumbull residents. So no appointment is necessary as well and results are available in twenty four to forty eight hours. And please make sure you bring a valid ID with you. Uh, and just to close, um, I'm not going to repeat it again, but please follow all of that good guidance that Chief Goodman just talked about. Wearing a mask, washing your hands, please, please remain vigilant when dealing with this virus. So please stay safe, stay well, and thank you for your continued patience and cooperation. And happy holidays to everyone.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah, guys, be safe, everybody, thank you.
Bye.
You.